So we're going to proceed now to two items concerning our election processes and systems. We have item, we're going to take item 10 and 20 together. Item 10 is the infrastructure security report from the chief elections officer. And then also item 20, which is a report on the California Voters Choice Act and the final election administration plan. Supervisor Slocum had just a few thoughts to share to kick this off. And I also want to thank Mr. Church and his team for his patience today. I know this is probably happening a little later than you might have anticipated.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, we've all been inundated with stories about election interference during the past year or so. And with that Russian hacking, along with questions about our ability to secure our voting process, and I know a couple of residents of San Mateo County had asked me, as a former election official, you know, were we hacked? And hence, the request for the office to come forward today and share this report with us. But make no mistake about this, that these concerns are very real, very real. And I think it's a fact that 21 states were attacked. And in Illinois, actually, the voter registration system was hacked. I believe those are facts. And I know that elections chief Mark Church is spending a great deal of time with his team in the elections office and federal and state authorities and vendors. In fact, some of the vendors are here today with us. And that work is certainly appreciated, as we all believe the integrity of our election process is fundamental to our democracy. If people lose faith in the system, only dire consequences will follow. And given this, I've asked the chief elections officer to come before the board today and outline what is being done here in San Mateo County to secure our voting system and voter registration system, as well as the elections office itself, and hopefully help us better understand the steps they're all collectively taking to keep up with the ever-changing environment. So with that, I just want to thank Mr. Church once again for coming today. I know he's going to have a very thorough presentation, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Very good. Welcome, Mr. Church.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum, for those opening remarks, and Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. I want to start off with a quote from the CEO of IBM. This quote is illustrative of the world we live in today. It's a world where the threat of sophisticated cyber attacks is very real. And both the public and private sectors are constantly under attack by malicious actors. And as this quote suggests, it is the single greatest threat to every company in the world, and we can change that to add the words to every governmental agency. According to the National Security Administration, our nation's infrastructure is under cyber attack every second of every day. This is the new normal. We are in the midst of a cyber war that is unprecedented, and we are at the front line of that war. This cyber war is well-funded and led by malicious nation-state actors and organized cyber criminals, whose intent is to destroy all aspects of our nation's infrastructure, including the electoral process. On January 6, 2017, the Department of Homeland Security has now designated the nation's election infrastructure as critical infrastructure, providing protection and security under the National Infrastructure Protection Plan. The importance of the security and integrity of the county's election infrastructure cannot be overstated. This designation elevates the importance of our election infrastructure and prioritizes it for protection on an equal par with the nation's other sectors, such as government facilities, power grids, water supplies, transportation and defense systems, and financial services, to mention a few. This action by the federal government recognizes the seriousness that cyber threats pose to our electoral process. Despite these well-funded cyber attacks, I want to be very clear. San Mateo County voters can rest assured that their votes and voting systems are safe and secure since the deployment of the Hart Inner Civic Election System in 2006. Not one ballot cast on our voting machines has ever been compromised. And I've got to hit myself here. Our voting system is a closed system. It does not have any connections to the Internet or the county network. In every election, our voting machines undergo exhaustive logic and accuracy testing. In every election, each verifiable ballot option, which is our paper audit trail, is checked and rechecked. And in every election, a 1% manual tally is conducted to confirm the accuracy of the results. And in reviewing the audit trails and in conducting the 1% manual tally, there has never been a voting machine discrepancy or error. But we can't let our guard down. We must continue to be vigilant, and we must commit additional resources in this cyber war. These are some of the elements of a successful cyber defense system. First, strong partnerships. Only through a vigilant, well-funded and coordinated cyber defense effort between federal, state, and local agencies in partnership with the private sector can we safeguard our democratic process. We need to constantly improve and replace our aging equipment and systems with cutting-edge technologies. Innovative and proactive policies, along with robust security measures, are also required. Lastly, words are important. Public perception is just as important as reality. It is essential to maintain voter confidence and trust in our election systems and democracy, as Secretary of State Alex Padilla testified at a joint hearing of the state legislature. Irresponsible and inaccurate statements regarding the security and stability of our election systems and what occurred or didn't occur during the 2016 election undermine the confidence people have in our elections. As the secretary further noted in his testimony, the Russians successfully undermined voters' confidence in the electoral process without changing one vote, simply by creating discord and casting doubt on the integrity of elections. When we feed into that negative rhetoric that tends to shake voters' confidence, and the very foundation of democracy depends on the voters' confidence in the electoral process. As policymakers, we must be very careful with the words we choose, and that responsibility rests with every elected official, from the president down to local officials. This chart shows our partners who work with us to defend our elections infrastructure. This is a multi-layered effort that brings together federal, state, local, and private sector resources. It is a job that cannot be performed by one entity alone, given the broad reaches of cybersecurity threats. At the federal level, the county works primarily with the Department of Homeland Security, which is under the National Security Administration. At the state level, our primary partner is the Secretary of State's office. We work closely with the Secretary of State through its Office of Voting Systems Technology Assessment. We are also partners with the California Association of Clerks and election officials who provide training and information on election security. And of course, the Secretary of State works closely with the National Association of Secretary of States. And at the local level, the County Information Services Department is at the front line of our cyber defenses. ISD works closely with the Department of Homeland Security in monitoring our cyber networks and establishes strict protocols for accessing the county network. We also have our own internal Department IT division, which is primarily responsible for managing the internal elections technology infrastructure behind the county firewalls. And we have the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office, who works with us if there's any criminal activity. Our vendors are key players in our cyber defense network. Hart Inner Civic provides our voting and tabulation systems. DFM Associates provides our elections information management system software to access VoteCal and manages our local voter registration database. RunBack Election Systems will provide ballot-on-demand printers for our vote centers. Bitney Bose provides our Olympus vote-by-mail sorter and scanner. And Nimbus Design provides RaceTractor, our election night reporting system. And I'd like to take just a moment to introduce our partners in the Cybersecurity Defense Network, which are here today. And of course, John Walton is here as Chief Information Officer from County ISD. John, and I'd like to introduce Karen Claykley and Pete Lichtenheld from Hart Inner Civic, who are here. Could you raise your hands? And Pete is a member of the Sector Coordinating Council of the Department of Homeland Security. And we also have Bruce Crockman from DFM Associates, and Jim Suver and Philip Johnson from RunBack Election Services. And also with us is my assistant, Jim Arizari, and Randy Mellon, our IT director, and along with our elections manager, Diana Izagiri. And of course, we have a number of members of our election staff. These are the subject matter experts that are available to answer any technical questions you may have regarding our election system's security. And at this moment, I'd like to ask John Walton to come to the podium to present ISD's role in the counter cybersecurity network. And then we will come back and give an overview of our security in elections.
Mr. Church, I think we have a question from the president.
Mr. Church, thank you very much for your presentation. You had mentioned earlier about voter, voting tabulation. You talked about voter registration role. So from your presentation, I'm gathering there's been no intrusion on either the voter registration role or on the voting tabulation. Is that correct?
There's no evidence of any intrusion. That's correct. In California, in San Mateo County.
And where was the other? Give me examples of intrusion that were found throughout the United States.
In other states, and we're not done with our presentation yet. We will come back and address the, these systems in detail. I wanted to let John do it first, but the other, there were 21 other states that had evidence of scanning activity that was reported. But then that report was narrowed down, I think, to, is it 21? Okay. Of scanning. And that's simply probing, looking around, not an actual hack. And then there were two states, I think, where there was an actual penetration. Is that correct? But the scanning is simply, as you know, it's like walking down the street and checking the doors and windows and seeing what's open. And so that was what has caused quite a bit of alarm and concern with the voting public. But in San Mateo County, no votes have been changed. And the secretary has reported, in the state of California, no votes have been changed. And the secretary has indicated no evidence of changed votes nationwide.
Got it. And one last question, and then I'll, you know, you can continue the presentation. So on the voting tabulation, that's done by Hart Inner Civic. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
So in terms of the tabulation, Hart Inner Civic, who sort of, is there a third-party vendor that sort of monitors the information they give back to you on who's entered the system or who's exited the system? And how does that work?
Okay. I'm in it. Where's Randy?
Thanks.
Randy? Jim? You want to handle that? Randy, why don't you come on up? And I think Randy, Mr. Mellon provided some information on that testing to you the other day, so I'm going to let him address that.
So the testing that I believe we're discussing is what we call hash testing, where we take, before an election, we take a lot of our data files, tables that will drive the election, and a lot of our software that will be used in the election, and we send it off to an independent third party, which is Underwriters Laboratory. They have algorithms, code that they run all, all of our programs, all of our data tables, through a process and come up with this whole series of hashtags. Then when an election is being completed, before we certify, we resend all of this software that we have now on our machines. And it's reset, they rerun all their algorithms to come up with a new series of hash test totals, and they validate those, saying, when those are 100% validated, it's like a fingerprint. It says, the code that you said you started this election with, and the data and the code that you ended it with, has not been tampered with. Is essentially the process. And Peter's a lot better explaining that if I don't quite get that right, because he lives it every day in all 18 states that Hart Inner Civic runs in.
You got it right.
I got it right? Okay.
And then compare it to the...
Yeah. Come on up, Peter.
Thanks. Good job, though. Hi, I'm Peter Lichtenheld. I'm the vice president of operations for Hart Inner Civic. We provide your tabulation system. The county does all the work, by the way. We just provide the system and the devices. And the key that Randy was talking about is the hash value that's compared is on the National Institute of Standards and Technologies site. So that's like the golden hash. So that's what's compared with the before-election here in San Mateo County and the post-election. All match, all's golden, and you go to the next election. Makes sense?
Yeah. Can you explain a little, just for the public, what hash is? And then why don't you do, walk us through, sort of, and what was the other, the third-party vendor?
United Labs, is that?
We use underwriting laboratories?
We use underwriting laboratories. And there's no relation between Hart Civic and underwriting. They're separate.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So why don't you write us, run us through the hashtag?
Sure. So we, Hart intentionally does not provide a solution for how to compare the hash. We just provide our hash, and it's the fox in the hen house theory, basically. We say, you know, we shouldn't be providing that solution. A third party, like you guys use, Underwriter Labs, should do it. So you have an independent group doing the comparison. So a hash is, just like Randy said, it's a fingerprint. So it's a value that the software has that is the fingerprint of the software. And the great thing about the hash is that you can use it to tell, just like you can with the fingerprint, who did what, or what the value is at the beginning, and then what the value was at the end, and make sure it's the same as what's posted in the National Institutes of Standards and Technology website. And you could do it not only for every piece of software involved in the system, but you can look at every device and look at the devices, and are they the same as they started, and have they been tampered with? That's the gist.
I'm sorry. Hash is an acronym for?
That's a good question. And I do not recall. You guys, is that in your deck?
Protocol test.
I don't have that one off the top of my head. Sorry.
It's a security protocol based on different encryption of other 128, 256 encryption.
Good job.
So it's an acronym for something?
It is a security protocol, not really an acronym.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Other questions?
Last question. In your, how long have you worked for Hart Civic for?
That's a great question. I've worked for Hart Inner Civic for 17 years. I was the director of training when you guys first implemented with Mr. Slocum over elections at the time, and worked my way up through Hart. I've been there since the beginning of our product that you currently have.
And I would assume in those 17 years, you've never been compromised?
No. Our job is to make your job easier and to provide solutions for people to vote accurately and securely. That's what we do.
So it's never, there's never been an intrusion? There's never?
Nope.
Okay.
And we have a great example here in California, actually, Humboldt County. So Humboldt County did, previous to Hart having, providing the system for Humboldt County, California, another vendor supplied the system, and there was a mistake, and votes were not accurately counted. They fired that vendor, brought in Hart, and then since Hart has been in Humboldt County, let's say since 2008 or so, a little after you guys went live with Hart, that the project that actually found that discrepancy has continued, and they basically do a separate but equal, a parallel test of their election with a separate entity counting the votes and comparing, did it come out the same way as it was supposed to? And it did the first time, and every single time it's been 100%. So that's an example of how accurate we are.
One more, promise.
That's okay.
So we hear a lot about open source, right? And the people have been talking about open source because that provides sort of people the opportunity, you know?
I'm listening.
Okay. I was just making sure. So when it comes to open source, it gives sort of people more access, more public, you know, there's more public, the public the ability to see what's actually going on. Now, your system is not open source because it's sort of, it's packaged in, correct, in terms of who can see it, who can't see it? It's really sort of wired that way, right? So there isn't, correct if I'm wrong, if I'm speaking out of turn?
Our system is not built on open-source software. So the idea, so we're talking security. So the idea of open source, the kind of common knowledge of open source is a community effort to build something, basically. And that's a great way to do some things, but it's not a great way to do an election system. And then a good example of that would be if we went back, and I'm not going to go back, but the list of the 16 critical infrastructure groups, infrastructure groups that the DHS has identified, if you look down those 16, none of those uses open-source software, right? We don't use open-source software to run our nuclear power plants, right? And the reason is because if you go to open source, one of the things you've gotten rid of that's huge for security is security by obscurity. There is security in folks not knowing stuff. And if you don't believe in that, ask the Defense Department about it. There's tons of security by obscurity. The other thing about open source is, we, in a way, we do some things that are consistent with what open-source advocates want. And the two really important things we do are, we do disclose source. So disclose source is that trusted people do have the software and do have all the code and do see it compiled. So when we come to California or to the feds and do certification, we disclose the source. They know everything. So we've disclosed the source in that way. And then the other thing is independent testing. So at the federal level, and especially in California, there's tons of independent testing, not by us, not by the state, but by a third party that is a professional testing lab, and that's what they do. So does that answer your question about open source?
And I'm just curious, because in Los Angeles County, are you familiar with what they're doing around open source? And then in San Francisco County, and what's your opinion on that?
Maybe you could just briefly, maybe you could briefly just explain what they are doing in San Francisco and Los Angeles.
Well, so for LA, for sure, and San Francisco, I think, is looking at this, they're basically wanting to build their own voting system and use open source to do that, and do it in a way, kind of like I just described, as a community effort. I would say the biggest problem with that is if you build a system that's based on community input, and everybody's, you know, working together to create the system, it's going to take a lot of time, it's going to take a lot of money, you haven't used any of the expertise of the industry that's already out there, been doing this for 17 years. And the biggest thing is, it's been, what, 10, 11 years since you guys implemented your system? Hart has been there the whole time to support you. We're going to be here the whole time. You need our support going forward. If you have a community-built system, who's supporting it? And who's going to continue supporting it? That's the biggest fly-in-the-ointment, I think, with that kind of approach. Makes sense? Other questions? Those are great questions.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
I would just add one point that, we have some slides with some statistics later, and what helps us feel safe is that we know this system is running in 18 states, 400 other counties, and we have their input coming in if they've had any problems as well. So we don't stand alone in making the assessment of the quality of the code and its safety. Okay?
Question for you, a technical question. Randy?
Yes.
Tech, or, you know, so with an open source, you can use different companies' products, correct? Like widgets or whatever? You can, there's different things you can, you can put in a voting, different voting systems, correct? Right? Right? You can, you know, we talk about the community, right? We talk about all these things. But with these little widgets, they can be added in, right? For open source?
I have not seen an open-source election system that I could see exactly what they've done or not done. Theoretically, in other open-source products like Linux and things like that, and even, you know, say with Linux, people can be given the source and then write APIs to it that you could include. So they would write programs that could be used as part of your building blocks. There is a potential for that, yes.
Okay. I guess we'll get back to the presentation.
Okay.
Little recess there, and we'll get right back to it.
John, Mr. Walton will come forward and discuss what he does at the county level. Thank you.
Good morning, still. I'm a little ahead of myself. I apologize. John Walton, CIO for the County Department of Technology. Morning, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. This will be brief. I just asked Mark if he would allow me maybe to present a few slides and talk a little bit about what we do at the countywide level to frame somewhat the conversation about cybersecurity. As Mr. Church pointed out, this is an increasing threat to all technology systems in general. As you've heard through the news, as we've heard recently with the city of Atlanta and other places, you know, every, every government, whether it's local or state or federal, is in under increasing attacks and sophistication through development of new tools. And so it's definitely a focus for us here in the county, not only working closely with our partners at the elections, but with public safety, with health, with child support services, and all the departments in the county. We feel cybersecurity is one of, really, the keystones to improving trust and reliability of our systems with the public and the staff in our departments. If we use just sort of the increasing threat over time, you know, we've continued to modify tools. I get often asked, and we don't want to go too much into details about how we configure our security systems in a public meeting and things like that, but if we use a couple of our key technology systems as you, as canaries in the coalmine, if you will, and talk about kind of how much traffic and how much threat we see out there, one example we would give you would be our email system. In a typical month, we looked at some of the statistics, we had, you know, close to 4 million emails submitted to the county for processing, over half of those were rejected as potentially unsafe, and working with our vendor. So you can imagine the load of hostile activities out there. And in a typical month, also, some of the new tools we've implemented around Internet activity, whether it's incoming or outgoing, we look at, we've had over 375,000 Internet transactions, 375 million Internet transactions in a single month. Again, we've rejected, you know, close to 50 million of those as potentially unsafe as a threat to the network. And so we have sophisticated tools we put into place, but as you can tell from just some of the general numbers, the threat is real, and it can come from a variety of sources. It's not like the old days where it was a single individual sitting in their room, bored, just looking for something to do. You know, these are company or state-sponsored activities that have a lot of weight behind them and things we have to take seriously. And so we have, ISD's approach to this is sort of the typical three tiers we look at when we talk about threats and how we address them, people. We see the people, both our employees and our staff in ISD and our partners out in departments is integral to solving this problem. We've almost doubled the size of the ISD security team through the support of the county manager's office in the past two years, and really beefed up our capabilities in that group about how we respond. As you know, in security, sometimes it's proactive. There's things we can do through advisories and take proactive action. Sometimes it's reactionary when we discover a threat out there and we need to react to it in real it in real time. There's processes, we have good processes in place in this county where ISD reviews every contract that comes before you and we work with the vendors behind the scenes to fill out security questionnaires to ensure that we're comfortable with the security protocols they have in place. And so we work proactively with county council and departments to review all those contracts. And that technology, as I said, we, we, we work to add new products all the time to our portfolio of how we deal with those things as we move forward. My final slide, because I know you want to get back to the meat of election security and what they do with their systems and software, but I will say there's a whole laundry list of things we do and I won't take up your time reading through this. I suspect you can read through them, but you've probably seen, some of you that have been here longer than I have you in the past, how we've changed things over time. We've continued to add different features, different levels of security to, to monitor things, to ensure your logins are secure, to ensure the data on your devices is, is secure through encryption. As Mark mentioned, we have a very close partnership with the FBI and Department of Homeland Security. We're active members in Infarguard, which is the Critical Infrastructure Working Group, and we meet regularly with the FBI and other stakeholders about what they see as threats at the national level. The Department of Homeland Security actually does external scans of our network on a regular basis and works closely with our chief security officer to go over threats that they see and compare our network to standards and we always work to remediate any issues that they think they might have concerns about. We stay very proactive on top of that. So we feel, unfortunately, I, I wish I could tell you we're unbreakable or unhackable. That's what everybody wants to hear is how do we ensure this never happens? As you've seen, you know, even the most, you know, banks and retail organizations and healthcare organizations, you know, the threat of being hacked is always real. There's internal threats, there's external threats, and I think this county does a good job in working as partners internally with our external partners to find ways to minimize those risks as much as possible. I appreciate the hearing today because I think it, it really highlights your, your attention and concern to this matter, which is, I think, all of our concerns. And, you know, we look forward to continuing to have the dialogue and talk about ways we can continue to improve this in the future, but I'm happy to answer, perhaps offline, if you have technical questions or detailed questions about how we do that specifically. There are some things we'd rather not talk about in a public meeting, but always happy to meet with you individually and talk about our security posture and how we address things.
Mr. President, one question of, of John, maybe it's really, he, he wants to defer it to Mr. Church. It seemed to me one of the key features of our system is this independent laboratory doing the testing. And so the, the question becomes, in my mind at least, who's checking the checker? Is that laboratory safe? Has it been hacked and how do we know? So that's a question to you, or you may want to defer it, John.
I, I will say just in general about that, you know, we believe in second and third-party checking of everything and we do that a lot in ISD, not just for election systems, but we have, you know, we put source code in escrow, we have source code checked for a number of our systems. I will let Elections, of course, talk specifically about their system and how they go about that, but I think, I think you raised a good point. I think it's always good, whether you develop software internally or with the public in an open source model or whether you contract to a vendor to have software developed and support that, to have multiple layers of checking and validation that that software is as good as you hope it would be and is that you want it to be is always the, the best course of action. So with that, I will turn it back over to Elections and let them maybe specifically address, Mr. Malpe, your question about checking of the checker.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Interesting that we, you reject 2 million emails, but 2 million come through. It's a lot of email. I think about a million and a half come to the five of us.
Thank you, thank you, John, and I'm going to turn it over to, Randy, did you have anything to add to this last?
Jim has the rest of the presentation. I can look for you. The underwriter laboratories are certified and their protocols are retested by one of the federal national commissions that do that. I don't have their name off the top of my head, so I'm, I don't see that report, but I know that report is made, created and generated and they have to continue to do it to get their certification on the process that they're going through. Keep in mind, they don't ever get any of our real data, they don't get our real voter data. They get our source code so that they can validate that the source code and the, and the table setups that we use for ballot construction and stuff have not been tampered with. They're not actually seeing our voting results. We don't send that data to them. I don't believe, yeah, that's correct. Okay.
So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Arizori, who will provide an overview of Elections Infrastructure Security. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Church, Mr. President, members of the board. In response to Mr. Malpe's question, it's the National Institute of Standards and Technology that establishes the standards that the third-party vendor has to adhere to. And all of those systems come under the Secretary of State's certification process. So a widget added to an existing system isn't going to happen unless it's actually approved by the Secretary of State with that particular system. So it's not as easy to, to change those systems once they are certified. I'm here to give an overview of the Elections Infrastructure at the ground level. And I think the first place to really start and the general theme that you're going to hear throughout this whole process is that this is truly a team effort, federal, state and local. And when we get down to the local level, it's your Elections Team that really has to function as a unit. We have great individual members. Individuals don't count in the administration of an election. It really is truly a team effort. There are too many moving parts and I'm proud to say that you have one of the best election teams here that has been put together in the state of California. Let's talk a little bit about the Elections Infrastructure. We start first by defining what that means. And Elections Infrastructure is defined in the Department of Homeland Security as, in terms of the infrastructure definition itself, this is the federal definition, all election storage facilities, polling places, centralized vote, vote, vote tabulation locations, information communications technology, voter registration databases, voting machines, other systems to manage the elections process and those systems that report and display results. It encompasses every aspect of your elections operation, that designation. Drilling down a little bit deeper into the county infrastructure, this defines that definition locally. Our Elections Infrastructure operating units are listed above here. They're your warehouse, your vote by mail, your vote centers, your candidate filing, your election officer, polling places, vote outreach and education teams, election material couriers, election night reporting, voter registration petitions, precinct supply, sample ballot, phone bank, official ballot. Each and every one of those units, and there are more, are staffed by your Elections Professionals. That is locally your Elections Infrastructure at the ground level. Let us talk a little bit about it at a bird's eye view. When we talk about Elections Infrastructure locally, we really have to compartmentalize the system. There are two basic aspects to Elections Infrastructure. There is voting technology and there are the physical assets of the system. Under voting technology, and this is a very important concept for us to understand and the nation as a whole. Everybody talks about hacking systems and we go right to the voting tabulation system. It's important to realize that Elections Technology has two parts to the technology. That is voter registration and voting systems. The voting systems are what we just heard about is Hart Inner Civic and the other players that actually have the machines and tabulate the vote. And the voter registration side of the equation, which is the Secretary of State's VoteCal program. In California, the Secretary of State's VoteCal system is the registration of record, the voter registration of record. We push and pull information to that and we do that with one of our software vendors here today and that's DFM Associates. They are interface to the local registration system, which is our Elections Management System. They also provide the software for us to manage the local system and also provide the software to interact with vote count. We will come back to this chart later on. Voter Registration Security. The San Mateo County Voter Registration EIMS for DFM Associates is extremely secure. There are roles with passwords, only authorized personnel can access the system. It is secured in a county network with no election data stored in the cloud. All servers are running and operating in a system that is up to date and has anti-malware software that is updated on a routine basis. The Secretary of State's VoteCal system is connected to Elections via secure connection that is only used for VoteCal data transfers. There's no other connection to that system. It limits those who can access and exit through that connection. It is controlled. VoteCal adheres to industry and standard security controls and best practices. Servers are on a secure network, data is not stored in the cloud and only specific staff can access VoteCal data. Let's talk a little bit about vote center security because that is the new election model that we are going to be deploying here in San Mateo County. We're going from a polling place environment to a vote center environment and there are dramatic differences between the two models. Vote Center Security will require, for this election, and we will be moving forward in 2019 with an RFI to look at our, our new vote system, voting system, and we will, that will be the subject of another report, but currently we are using our existing system with Hart Inner Civic and supplementing it with laptops, et cetera, to make this election happen. In terms of the vote center, we are going to be deploying approximately 210 laptops with VPN connections to the county network. John Walton is somewhat modest. There isn't a thing you can do to get through that county firewall from this side of the equation without first going through ISD. They are working with us cooperatively right now to set up the network and the systems for vote centers and vote center security. It's protected by the firewall and it's going to be an encrypted VPN connection to those vote centers. Only access EIMS and SOS website for voter registration. Other websites and email are blocked. So on those computers, that's the only activity that can occur. You can't go online, you can't go on a browser, you can do absolutely nothing except go on to the SOS website. We have an IT director that likes to kind of make sure things are secure and he came to the office the other day, so was very excited about some of the security features that are in our PCs. Costs a little bit more, but it reminded me of Mission Impossible, that if you go outside of that, control seems like smoke will come up out of the computer. It is really, it's, it's going to be a self-destruct type of system. It's very, very controlled, it can only go to the SOS in VoteCal. All unused ports and connections are sealed. Laptops are sealed with tamper-evident seals when not in use and stored in a secured location every day. This is how vote center security from a bird's eye view looks. Let's see if I can get a pointer here. Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't do too good. I will just explain it. On the right-hand side of, of the equation here, you basically have, on our side of the firewall, the EIMS applications, the computers that we access and the servers. From that, we go through the county firewall through a VPN connection to the vote center. Each vote center will be connected in this model, in this template format. We have computers that will be utilized by staff on the right-hand side and then we have computers on the, excuse me, on the left-hand side. And on the right-hand side, we have computers that will be utilized by the public, particularly for our conditional voter registration to access the network from the voter's registration point of view. Going back to voting technology, I want to talk more, a little bit now, about our voting And you've heard a lot of what I'm going to say, so I will go through that somewhat quickly. But the flow chart is very self-explanatory. In terms of our voting technology, as I mentioned, our voter registration and our voting systems are two separate systems. They are not on the internet, nor are they connected. There is an air gap between the two. Most of the incidents that you have read in the newspaper deal with the voter registration side of technology. The voting system side, as you kind of read and see, not one vote has been compromised in the 2016 election. What was successful there was undermining the belief in the security of the system, but in terms of compromising a vote, that did not happen. In terms of our voting systems, we have our Hart Inner Civic on the right-hand side that provides our vote center voting machines. We have our Olympus scanner sorter, which processes our vote by mail. Both of those systems feed into the Hart Inner Civic Voting Tabulation System, which is in a secured, sanitized room with major security protocols, cameras, you can't get in and out of that room unless you have passed the security protocols. And in that voting tabulation is where we actually tabulate the vote and report it through RaceTracker on election night. We talked a little bit about the Hart Inner Civic Voting System. It was deployed in 2006, it's utilized in 18 states, operates in 1,400-plus counties, serves 2,500 precincts, supports over 30 million registered voters, and not one ballot cast through our Hart Voting System has ever been compromised. Never had a discrepancy in our 1% manual tally since implementation. And if we did find there was one, it was usually a human error in the calculation, was not the system. Continuing with the Hart Voting System, it is a closed system, as we mentioned, it is not connected to the internet or the county network. It is certified by the National Associate of State Election Districts. It's certified by the California Secretary of State. There's digital encryption to protect data, physical hardware access controls, strict chain of custody, security processes, and best practices and rigorous staff training are constant to mitigate risk and security breaches. Let's talk about the other side of the Elections Infrastructure, and that's our physical assets. That too is where the rubber meets the road. In our human resources side of the equation, we, when we hire staff, everyone is fingerprinted, background-checked, they are provided technical and security training and they follow rigorous policies and procedures. Our facilities is basically our facility at 40 Tower Road, it's the Elections Building. We will be coming back to you with respect to the Elections Facility because we have been under the Tower Road master plan and we've been talking to Public Works. It is an, an old facility, it poses certain challenges, particularly for the new voting model that we're moving towards, which will have to have an expanded vote by mail area, a conditional voter registration area to handle the flow of people, cars that are coming. So we will be coming to you with a plan for the 40 Tower Road Facility. It's the heart of the operation. There are secured room servers, I mentioned before, there's card key access, the secured tabulation room, security cameras, building alarm system, and it houses all of our equipment, election servers, JBCs, which are judge booth controls, laptops, PCs, ballot boxes and all of the materials that are going to the vote centers. In terms of the policies and procedures, visitors must check in, check in and are escorted at all times. Onboarding and offboarding procedures are in place for all employees. This is a very important concept. This is a very important concept, and that is that there's a two-person integrity around all voted ballots. When there are live ballots, there must be two persons involved in the handling of those ballots. And that is from the vote center all the way through the tabulation process. Opening and closing of the vote centers have some very strict protocols and security procedures, and of course, the equipment security procedures for tagging, logging, and tamper evidence seals in our room. You know, this quote is a pretty good place to end the presentation because, as you see with the theme that we're presenting to you, cybersecurity defense is truly a team effort. It cannot be accomplished by one entity at all. Everyone shares that responsibility. I was reading an article that said, "The future of the United States and our infrastructure depends now not in nuclear superiority, not in military superiority, but in technology superiority." And that's where our resources have to be allocated, both at the national, state, and local levels. On that note, Mr. Church, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jim. That concludes our presentation, so we'll be happy to answer any questions.
I believe we do have one speaker. Brent, would you like to speak at this time?
Thank you, supervisors. My name is Brent Turner. I'm with the California Association of Voting Officials. Just to clarify a couple things, NASED stands for the National Association of State Election Directors, not districts, just in case there's any confusion there. NASED is a private organization put together by folks that are in the business of putting together business leagues, and they basically put the license plate on the election devices for a fee. And that's problematic in itself. We all root for San Mateo County. If the Wright brothers were here watching this presentation and were good-hearted, they would not allow you to get on this described plane. Although I'm sure Mr. Church's well-intended as in attempts to appropriately secure the current proprietary systems, the cruel hoax is that his efforts are futile, as we know from the Department of Defense and NASA, that a proprietary system can never be appropriately secured. And this was the finding of the top-to-bottom review by Deborah Bowen, Secretary of State that preceded Alex Padilla. There has been no technological advances since the top-to-bottom review, which was scathing regarding these types of systems. And now we've seen the Russian interference make a mockery of these same systems that these vendors are proposing. Hart knows that the San Mateo County voters cannot be assured of any security as long as our systems are intellectual property licensed as faith-based. Paper trails and audits were mentioned. They do not defend against the looming hacks. Likewise, merely disconnecting from the Internet does not defend against the hacks. Cockio was referenced, and Secretaries of State, they're largely out of sync with the cutting edge of security defense, which is the open-source systems. Can I have another two minutes?
I'll give you another minute, but if you could wrap up.
Thank you. The real pioneers for security are, again, NASA and the DoD, who utilize open-source technology. Mr. Church states, "It is best to not bluntly address these problems, but we feel differently." Mr. Irazari proclaims, "Complete security is simply achieved." This is not true here. The test labs are also proprietary, and they are stipulated as a broken system by the inventor of the test labs and the certification process, Mr. Roy Saltman. The Humboldt County example is likewise bogus, that those systems that are doing the checking are, again, proprietary, although they purport to be open source, which is not true. That is, in my short segment here, about as much as I can give you, I will just say that I think Hart Inner Civic knows better. They should move their efforts toward an open-source system and help the county. We have a national security crisis occurring here, and I don't appreciate a lot of the misinformation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. So, Mr. Church, we're going to move to the second half now, to the...
Let me ask some questions.
Oh, apologies. We have some questions from our board members.
Let me just say that way back when, when we acquired the Hart voting system, it was a time in California's history when most California counties issued RFPs for voting systems. And as was mentioned, Deborah Bowen, who was Secretary of State, I believe at the time, ordered a complete top-to-bottom review of all of those voting systems that were used in California counties. San Mateo County's Hart Inner Civic voting system was the only system that came out of that top-to-bottom review as being certified, which meant it could be used for real elections. The rest of the counties in California unfortunately had to mothball their systems. So the top-to-bottom review was, as I remember, and it was a while ago, thorough, complete, and very professionally done. The other thing that I wanted to just ask, if I could, Mr. Church, is that, under the new election model, when the vote centers are connected, you have to have a way for a person who theoretically votes in Daly City, let's say, can't turn around and drive to East Palo Alto and cast another vote, and then drive to San Mateo and cast another vote. So I guess the question is, some way that system is connected through the VPN and would prohibit that sort of mischief. And I'm wondering if you could just talk for a moment about the security of that process.
The laptops that check the current registration are connected to a secure VPN, to our voter registration database, and are able to determine in real time whether or not that particular individual has cast a ballot in another location. So if someone has voted in Daly City and then comes down to Redwood City to vote, we would know it when they checked in. If I could just add one thing to these last comments, I just want to say that in the elections' business, we are risk-averse, and the open source is not yet proven technology in the elections' arena. It's being explored in San Francisco and Los Angeles, but it's being explored, and nothing has been accomplished yet in those two counties. We want to stay with the tried and proved system. Hart has many years of experience, and there has never been a vote discrepancy on any of their machines, and that's the bottom line. The other point I want to make is that with an open source, we would be required to maintain that system. And right now, we are at 67% of the Bay Area average of staffing for an elections' office. We would have to ramp up tremendously to be able to maintain an open-source system at a great expense. So those are the factors that we're facing, and we have been very satisfied with Hart. So with that, Mr. President?
I think we may have a question or two, you'll ask, or do you?
Just a comment about open source versus the proprietary. I assume that if you did an open source, you would have a unique party putting your system together, so it'd be dependent upon the developer of that system. And when that developer of that system goes away, you have to somehow figure out how they did it. My only experience was in our criminal justice system, that we did do an open source and eventually had to scrap it because we just, you know, it was no way to upgrade it because most of the codes were proprietary, or they were open source, but they were outdated. And so I would assume that, you know, if you did an open source, which sounds like a great idea, but it would be kind of a unique system dependent upon the architect of that system, the advantage of, you know, the proprietary system is at least you have a group of people who keep up with both the technology and can upgrade your technology. So it seems to me that, I mean, I could, I understand what Mr. Turner's saying. I think that it's certainly well-meaning, but those kinds of systems, they're unique, and they end up being very costly and really dependent upon the architect who built it.
That's right. And so as you say, you would have to have a developer or an architect to develop the system, and then, of course, the system would have to be maintained with additional staff at a tremendous expense. Did you have anything to add to that, Mr. Millen? Okay.
Senator Horstley, can I respond to you? No, you can't right now, but certainly after the meeting.
You certainly can come contact my office, Brent.
That's fine. I just wanted to refer to the part that's in NASA. Okay. You have a question, Mr. Canova?
Mr. Church, you know, Mr. Irazari had stated that you want a sort of a new facility on Tower Road, or wanted to be master planned. Did I get that right? Is that correct?
Some adjustments to the existing facility. So with the increase of the vote by mail portion of the election, we need to expand that area. So there needs to be some physical interior adjustments to the facility.
So it's not, you're not requesting a new building. You're asking for modifications within the existing building?
Modifications of the existing building, and the circulation of traffic on Election Day needs to be addressed with some new parking areas and driveways, and the modification of the interior of the building.
All right, great. And when do you expect us to do this?
Jim, did you have a...
Just kind of curious. I mean, we've just gone through a capital plan, and now we have a request for additional funding.
This year, we were provided funds through the Department of Public Works, excuse me, the Department of Public Works had funds to work with us on reviewing our facility needs. Originally, it was under the Tower Road master plan, where a new facility was proposed for elections, but it was wholly inadequate. It was far too small for the new elections' model that we are moving into. And so approximately $1 million was allocated in the Public Works Department to sit down with us and our staff to go through a comprehensive plan. We hired an architect, and we now have a conceptual plan that has taken all of the comments from staff and put it into a drawing, and we need to come forward with that to you. It's recently accomplished. We still have a couple of more meetings to meet with Public Works on. Once that's completed, that is something that we will be coming to you for next fiscal year.
So just, I mean, a final remark on the security issue. First off, I thought the presentation today was very helpful, and I'd spent some time with Assessor Church and Jim previously, so I, you know, I feel more confident after the benefit of those meetings. You know, I do find it, I don't think this open-source debate is going away. I do find it a pretty, you know, very kind of intellectually challenging, and, you know, maybe someone could do a forum someday with the leading advocates on each side. You know, I do note here, my home state, New Hampshire, Secretary of State, who's actually an individual I knew when I was in college, and he's still Secretary of State, they have indeed, longest-serving Secretary of State in the country, and the keeper of the first-in-the-nation primary, I might add. But they did, they went ahead and implemented an open-source system, and this letter seems to suggest that they're quite pleased with it. You know, LA and San Francisco, you know, it's an interesting debate. I mean, I don't think we can have it fully here, but I don't think it's going away, and I'm certainly going to try to follow it. But I think overall, the presentation today was assuring. So let's move to the Board's Choice Act.
Thank you, Mr. Pine, and...
President Pine, if I could just interrupt for a moment. Item 10 is listed as a, appears to be listed as an action item. It's, the board needs to move acceptance of the report.
Make a motion to accept the elections' infrastructure security report from the Chief Elections Officer.
Motion made and seconded to accept the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pine, members of the board, and we have not ruled out open source. We will consider it at the appropriate time when we evaluate all the voting systems. So...